Meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board. Have a staff board introductions.
Vince Messer, our board member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Haney, Board Member.
Staff introductions, please.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Robert Green, Code Enforcement.
Thomas Cannon, Fire Inspector.
Okay, we'll go to item number two, adoption of minutes from the November 6, 2024 regular meeting. Any additions, deletions, any comments? See, none, I'll move that we adopt the, except the minutes from the November 6, 2024 meeting.
Second.
On viva. Item number three, final plan review of a major use site plan and major subdivision entitled Home Two Suites for applicant Withum Family Limited Partnership and owner Ellsworth High LLC. The proposal is to construct a four-story, eighty-three-room, fifteen thousand, six hundred ninety-four-square-foot hotel. The subject property is an approximately three-acre lot located at six Downing's Highway, tax map one twenty-eight, Lot Eight in the Commercial Zoning District.
Could actually maybe make a minor edit to that, I just never noticed it until just now. It's not a major subdivision, so it's just a major use site development.
Okay, so corrected, it's just a major use site plan.
Thank you.
Someone here representing the applicant.
Steve Salisbury and David Withum.
Okay. You might as well introduce the, your fellow in the back.
Garrett.
Okay, he may speak.
He may speak, is he capable of doing that?
Oh, yes.
Yes, it takes.
Oh, he may be here for, he's here for two things.
It's a two for.
Okay, Steve.
A few minor edits were made to the plans at the staff's request, clarifying where snow storage was, directional arrows across the Hampton Inn parking lot, just to indicate to everybody that that's two-way traffic out to Walgreens entrance road. And I think that was about it for additional submissions.
I have no, I've got no letter from I have a W.
Oh, do we have someone, the other engineer on Zoom?
Yes, I don't know if the engineers on Zoom would like to introduce themselves real quick. Bill, you're online. Wish they were a second ago. Oh, we're muted, that's why.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, are we?
Big X through the sound there.
Do it every time.
I'm like a little technology to start to pay off, right?
Bill, can you hear us? Maybe?
No.
Yes, Matt, I can hear you just fine, I'll turn our video on.
Could you just introduce yourself real quick to everybody in the room there?
Okay, yeah, Bill Garrish with Northeast Civil Solutions, a civil engineer for the project.
I'm Jacob Saroy, I'm a traffic engineer on this project.
Bill Ray, I'm also working on the project with Jacob.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I guess we'll talk about the parking deferment first, if you'd like, or?
Uh, no, I'm not just, uh, just something simple on the site plan layout. Under construction notes, number seven says coordinate all electrical work with central main power. I'm guessing that should be person.
Yes, it should be, and we are coordinating with personal power.
We haven't really heard anything, I mean, I'm just kinda curious what, pretty much on the flow through the parking lot. It looks like there's a little island in front of the entrance to the motel itself, where the right-in, right-out is off Downing's Highway.
We're looking at sheet four.
The site plan layout.
Site plan layout, we see four, yes.
Okay, just kinda curious about when you come to that.
As you enter.
Island, it's a right, you know, you have an arrow, right arrow.
Yes, as you exit the property.
Well, no, it's, as you're driving kinda north in front of the entrance.
Okay.
I mean, I think you're just trying to keep cars from going out the right-in. See what I'm talking about, the, yeah, but, right arrow.
You got an in area, yeah, it's meant to be a right-in and a right-out.
He's talking about up.
When it's already in the parking lot.
I'll have to approach the van.
Oh.
Yes, okay, yeah, the intention is so they don't.
Okay.
We're gonna paint that out to try to keep traffic from going out that exit, it's just awkward to go out that way. Talking about one here, this one here. Yep, yeah, okay.
And it's, uh, Matt, I sent you an email, I guess, I'm still a little confused on the difference in the water usage and the sewer usage, the gallons per hour, because I don't recall any other project, and I may be mistaken, where water and sewer has a different gallons per day, or however they measure it.
Yeah, and so, I had to talk to Mike about that today, which is why I didn't email you back about that. But, um, so his calculations, essentially they both use different ways of calculating. Our ordinance sadly is, one way to calculate, which is what Mike used, which is the eighty-five-hundred, roughly gallons per day for a use like this. And then, um, you know, the hotel engineers used a separate number, which is more ac, probably more accurate to what the actual usage will be, but, you know, with the city ordinance request is eighty-five-hundred, so I had conversations between both parties that, you know, the applicant agreed to go to what the city requires, which is eighty-five-hundred, and their system is designed to do that.
Well, I mean, generally, isn't it the water company that comes up with the, how many gallons per day is used?
Well, kind of, it's, so our sewer department uses a system built off of the Main State Center for, or Main State Department for Health and Human Services to calculate their fee, but that's based on gallons per day from that system, where Reggie and the water department use PUC calculations for gallons per day. Usually both are fine, but I think when you calculate the fee for this type of use, branches out. Hotels, not the same for both of those uses.
So that opens up a question for me, Matt. Are these averages, or are they considered my education here, max capacity?
Um, I would say for, with the hotel providers, is actual modeling, um, and, uh, Bill, or finally engineers, come on the correct me, but actual modeling, and then the Ellsworth ordinance is more an estimation based on state standards essentially, for what they think they use, what this will use.
So if just theoretically both hotels are full capacity, we'd still be okay?
Yeah.
I don't know, I just have a hard time. It's not, in our purview to accept it, but it just seems, it's unfair to the developer to have the water company saying there's gonna be X number of gallons, and the sewer department saying, no, we're gonna use more, which raises their fee.
I'd be glad to pay less. Why don't they, Mike Harris is gonna be getting away with that?
It just seems like the city should be consistent in between the water and sewer as to how many gallons.
You mentioned, this is the first time this has happened, so I have to figure out exactly where the wrinkle is in the ordinance is, like, versus why the hotel is different than like an apartment complex or something that's come before.
And I don't believe there was, I don't know if there was gallons per day. I know there was on a hundred fifty-unit residential that might come up with, but there was no gallons per day in Reggie's lot.
Right, well, they looked at what was presented and just said that that was acceptable, the system could handle it.
Okay. Oh, and I sent you an email, we got every, we got an email back on the stormwater line?
Yes, so, currently there is city infrastructure that runs under this lot for stormwater. There is a, a pipe that runs under where essentially the parking lot and the building will be, but it's listed, Worden Current was hired by the city to do an evaluation of the stormwater infrastructure. This particular piece of infrastructure that connects up to the high street is not in great condition. So the idea is at some point we would replace it, but my conversations with them due to this project, Worden Current, and I both agree that we'll just reroute that system around this project when the time comes to repair and replace that section of stormwater, so that no longer runs underneath the building itself. It may run along the parking area at some point, and so if we need to repair it, we can go through and still do that, but it won't impact the structure itself.
So however, whatever storm line is gonna be there, I mean, is the city gonna have to put in a new line? Or is the motel? I mean, motel is putting in some, but, so does the city have to put in a new stormwater line in order to eliminate this one?
Yeah, we would have, either way, we were gonna put in a new stormwater line, because the one that's there now needs to be replaced.
Okay.
And we're just gonna reroute where the line goes, instead of just replacing the existing line where, exactly where it's at.
Because that would then be under the building.
Right.
So is, is the new line, where's the new, what I'm trying to get, I mean, if the new line is out in the road, we all know that high street's gonna be totally reconstructed. Is this area right in front of the motel gonna be reconstructed too, I mean?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a timeline for that, though, I don't know, so Worden Current hasn't actually engineered what the reorganized stormwater system will look like down there.
But would that, would that have to be done prior to the MDOT project?
He does?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because MDOT does this, there's a moratorium on, for the most part, on high street, but we might not even get to the section of stormwater by the time that moratorium runs.
Okay, you have a comment, Steve, but, I mean?
We're aware of the line, and we're gonna actually replace some of it that is near the building, so there's no future issues. If it gets rerouted, it gets rerouted, but.
I'm just afraid where, where Worden Current says, you know, assessment has, this list is needs replacement. And now they're talking about abandoned line, I'm, I'm just worried that is this line gonna work for the motel? Or at some point, is the line gonna totally dissolve and the motel's?
Quite a dissolving line level, but it'll, it should work for the timeline that we have to replace all of our stormwater. If it was an emergency, like, repair needed, Worden Current would prioritize that over other sections of the city, which is, they were prioritized more of the main, like, North Main Street.
Okay, but I'm just concerned about a city line now is gonna be running under their property that could potentially have to be dug up? After they finish construction and they have a nice paint parking lot?
I mean, unless something goes wrong, I don't think that would happen. Talking to Worden Current, they're not, like, concerned about that happening in the timeframe of the city replacing all of the stormwater infrastructure. But again, bad things happen, I can't predict whether or not something could go wrong, but. Worden Current was fine with the idea of the construction happening and then doing a reroute at a later date.
So the water guys are happy, the city's happy, and you're happy?
Yes.
You're okay with the way that stormwater line is at the present time?
Yep.
We'll come back and move it tomorrow.
No.
I'm just, one kinda minor thing, and this is more for staff, but, um, when we get the TRT reports, could we please have a date, because by the time we're done with looking at something, you know, we get several meetings and this way we know which, which one has come first. I mean, sometimes it's easy to figure out, but sometimes we have four to five of them. So we just have a date on it. You got traffic?
I ask a bunch of questions, you got a bunch of answers, I'm good.
Good.
Really? Yeah, what can I tell you, sorry.
I'm disappointed.
That's what happens to these guys, getting brave.
I guess the guy on the screen did a good job.
They did a good job, sorry. Sorry that you all had to come in tonight, you know, to hear that.
I, I do have one question, if I may, about the flow for fire department through the properties, both properties. And my question is basically that there's a fork between, if I read it correctly, at the end of the driveway for the new property, and what I'm wondering is how negotiable, in the case of a great crisis, the, that fork in the road would be negotiated by a, by a fire ban?
Which particular fork in the road are we referring?
I'm talking about, um.
The fork not taking?
Going on Downing's Highway.
Yeah, coming off of Downing's and going up towards the Hampton Inn.
Okay.
And around the back of the proposed hotel.
That we've demonstrated the fire truck races maneuvering around the property.
Yes, I understand that, my question is about that fork.
Is negotiable?
Negotiable? Then I won't be quiet.
And according to your letter, Tom, you're all set with, everything is presented? Any questions, Mike?
Looks a bit earlier, it looked good, yeah.
So let's get on to the elephant on this, I'm in the parking.
Creative work, work here. So the ordinance allows for parking deferment for projects, up to twenty-five percent of the parking spaces. This project is looking for that deferment. There's a lot of parking spaces at the Hampton Inn, there's a lot, they are adding eighty-six spaces for this development. Based on the ordinance, it would require a hundred spaces, so it's a fourteen percent decrease, not, not close to twenty-five percent that's allowed by the ordinance. However, the way the ordinance is written is a little clunky, where the board can allow for a reduction in parking by twenty-five percent, but then the site plan shall note the area where parking is being deferred with a dotted lot layout. If within a two-year period following issuance of a CO, which would give occupancy, the administrator determines, based on observed usage, that the deferred parking is needed, and such parking shall be constructed by the applicant within twelve months. So essentially, there needs to be a waiting period with space reserved for extra parking to collect data to see if the extra parking is actually needed. You know, based on observed usage of the Hampton Inn, which is a very similar size used right next to this space, and at Hilton collecting their own data on required parking spaces. Essentially, they've done the waiting period already, and there physically is not space to add fourteen extra parking spaces on this lot.
Sorry, there is a, there is?
There is not physical space to add fourteen extra spaces on this lot for the size of a development. So, getting a little creative. I thought that, you know, because of the spiritual ordinance is to collect data over that two years, but it's data they already have essentially for that lot. That the board would be able to grant that deferment with existing data essentially. But if the board's not comfortable with that, there may be another solution to find more parking spot space on the Hampton Inn lot potentially, and then transferring lots that already exist closer to the Home Two Suites site as, like, Home Two Suites parking spaces.
So, when they collected their data at the Hampton Inn, how many kind of empties were there at maximum time?
I'm sorry?
David spoke about a little bit last meeting about the parking usage at the Hampton, like, when they're even at full capacity, there's empty spaces.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I anticipate it at full capacity and staffed that there would be five to ten empty parking spaces at all time.
At the Hampton Inn?
At the Hampton Inn, yeah. It's, it's just the nature of the beast, I mean, I think of how we're, you know, if you look at Hilton's standards, which are some of the strictest in the industry, and they wanna make sure there's parking for all their guests, that their, you know, their standard's one per room. And that would, you know, be a requirement of eighty-three. So I, again, just from our past experience and looking at other towns, we've done projects, the standards, and I appreciate that, you know, Ellsworth is indifferent in factors and employees, but the standard we've run in across the board, every, any other project's been one per room, and we've never had an issue. The, so that would, you know, make for a requirement of eighty-three, and I believe is, Ellsworth is point-two parking per?
Per employee.
Per employee.
One per room plus?
Right.
One for every five employees.
Right, so I mean, I mean typically at, you might have ten employees at one time, if you have six housekeepers and two front desk, and maybe two at breakfast, but. So say even if you're at fourteen, that's, I don't know how many spots that would be, or fifteen. It's, it'll only be three or four extra spots.
Their apartment is point-two employee spaces per sleeping room, so it's point-two.
Oh, per sleeping, yeah.
Eighty-three, which is already at the fourteen.
Okay, yeah. So I mean, I can appreciate there's a formula in there, but it's excessive by industry standards, and again, Hilton has some of the most restrictive standards to meet.
So what, go ahead.
I was gonna say, one thing I'm a little uncomfortable on is, I think it would work, I mean, sharing spaces with the Hampton Inn. The one thing I worry about is that theoretically, these two properties could be sold to different people. Obviously, not your purpose at this point, but you never know what the future is gonna bring, and if, if that happens, then how would we, if, if, if the solution is just to share Hampton Inn spaces for the Home Two Suites, and let's say the, those properties separate, then the Home Two Suites is gonna be totally out of compliance with the parking standard. I wanna avoid worst-case scenario.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be totally out of compliance if, if after the two-year period agreement, the fourteen, fourteen percent reduction is, like, acceptable. But I do understand what you're saying about that, which is, I guess, would be the second option, which was if there is space on the Hampton Inn lot to mark out the additional parking essentially for Hampton Inn and transferring fourteen spaces over to Home Two Suites. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Probably the most likely scenario would be shift parking at the Hampton to some space that's all presently empty and dedicate extra spaces.
I understand that, but does shifting parking places at Hampton then reduce Hampton Inns below our standards?
No, they would be adding the fourteen that they're shifting to the Home Two Suites over to another part of the site, they would essentially build fourteen new parking spaces.
The Hampton Inn would?
Yes.
So we would build fourteen, not take fourteen current parking places?
Is the space to build new ones, is that interesting?
Potentially on the left-hand side of the building, yeah.
I mean, if it got to that point, we could do a minor lot line revision and grab the fourteen spots and put them over to the Home Two Suites.
I'll watch, just some sort of memorandum of understanding, I mean, it's kinda like an easement.
Well, you could do a memorandum of understanding, but then John's point if they sold.
Right, but it goes with the deed, if it's an easement, it would go with the deed.
If it's an easement, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're open to that, too, you know, an easement that's recorded and understood, if there's ever a sale.
Right. Problem solved? No?
Potentially, I mean, if they're willing to do anything.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
We'd accept that.
I mean, you could write to yourself, right, I mean, that's, you do it.
Right, yeah.
I, I think, the way I understand, I think that'd be the cleanest way to do it.
Right.
I agree. And it's documented, and it's.
I think it's something better than just a MOU, than, okay, probably a court, you know. I mean, if, if you're perfectly acceptable with that, I mean, I think I am. I mean, I guess it's up to you guys to figure out the wording of it.
It sounds like a good solution to me here.
Well, maybe that's just the condition.
Condition is approved.
The condition approval would be to have an easement drafted to, between the two properties, so allows fourteen spaces on the Hampton Inn to be used by Home Two Suites, and then additional would be the fourteen new addition, right, as needed, and fourteen new additional spots as needed would be constructed.
You know, and if it gets sold on the line, and there's evidence that, you know, you never, ever needed those fourteen, then by mutual agreement, it could go, with the city, it could go away.
The easement could dissolve at the two-year mark if the additional parking is not needed.
Makes sense.
Do you wanna rewrite that real quick?
Yeah. Allegedly, allegedly, please.
That's the harder part.
We ju, we just did all the heavy lifting for you, so.
You did, actually, that was very smart, I should've thought of an easement, because I would have a lot of it.
I'm trying to cover my ass when I was, oh, sorry. Damn, just hate that. What's that?
I do, John, I do have a question, though.
Oh, sure.
Eventually, so, did you say this is just a major use site development?
Yes.
It's not, it's not a major subdivision?
Correct.
Okay, so, along that lines, Tom, on your letter.
Yeah.
Can you correct your letter, because you have in there major use site development and major subdivision? Can you correct that?
I can.
Okay, as well as in your letter, can you include the NFPA edition dates?
Sure.
Can you do that for us?
Yeah.
Okay, just for correction purposes, so you have that on the front file.
Is there a specific one?
Uh, you just have, like, NFPA one, chapter eighteen, I don't know what edition you're using. And then you have NFPA one oh one, and you have section, but you don't have the section. So if you just include the edition and the section so that he has that on record.
Sure.
I have a question about the proposed expansion of the parking area. That is more a question about pedestrian access to the new facility. I'm sure there will be, there should be, drawn into the plans, sidewalk access and so on, to keep people from having to walk in the streets and so on and so on.
Yeah, I mean, if the fourteen spaces are the ones closest to the lot, there is a sidewalk fairly close to there that leads to the new development already. They may have to walk in the parking lot slightly, I mean, I don't know. It's so far that I would be really concerned about it, but I don't know, you'd also be interested in adding a branch off the sidewalk that's.
Steve, where, I'm a little confused, where is the area for the fourteen additional parking places?
If we have to build them?
Yes, yes.
Still on Withum Property.
Oh, okay.
Just access it off this, off this road. These would be the ones we'd set aside for the new hotel. And the sidewalk we were talking about would probably run right along there.
Would there be any more room under the, the parking to the north of Walgreens? There's a grassy area there, yes.
That's owned by us as well.
Yeah. I guess wherever you wanna put them, I guess whatever is easiest for them.
Yeah.
It's quite a hike from the place on the left.
This would be used by the Hampton, and this would be used by this hotel. People just park where they want them and go where they need them.
That's true.
Really?
Well, it's probably the kinda thing where you'd have, if you needed those, you'd have employees go there first.
Could, but they're, they're just there during the day.
Any other questions, or away from that?
Not a one.
No, that's all I, that's basically.
Can you ask one?
I, I did, I did the easement for you, come on.
Steve, I'm not used to this.
You did good, even I had a question.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask some questions now, no?
It's a good project.
Well, away from that, I would say, and I think I speak for the, for the board, that this presentation, I mean, I never expected it to be back in a month, after you did the preliminary, last one, and so, I would have to say, Mr. Witham, kudos to your team, to Steve, I mean, Steve's before us many times, but some of the engineers, the traffic engineers, Eric has helped out a lot in the last meeting, I wish all of our projects were like this.
Yeah, no, I feel very fortunate for the team we have, and how Steve leads them all and keeps things, and answers the questions, and is thorough the first time, so the completeness review doesn't have a long list to go through, it's very thorough out of the gate, which is very helpful.
Yeah, we had some months to put together, so.
Made our job easy.
Come back and build with some more stuff.
Yeah.
I would say I haven't been around for a long time with this board, but what you guys have presented, what I've seen, is, is very thorough.
Thank you.
It all depends on Matt now, with his writing of this motion.
It's definitely not legible.
Definitely not legible?
Yeah.
I may, I may only read part of it, then just turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'll probably read it and then let you-
Say what he said.
Sounds good.
Whatever Matt says.
Yeah.
In that case, I probably don't even finish writing it, I can just literally, yeah. So, the suggested condition would be, the applicant shall submit an easement agreement between the Hampton Inn and the applicant, showing that for two years after the granting of a certificate, certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall have used the fourteen spaces on the Hampton Inn's property, if necessary, after the two-year period, as determined by the code enforcement office, the Hampton Inn shall construct fourteen new spaces, if it is determined that there is not enough parking between the two properties for the uses established. And then, if it's an easement agreement, you can just say, like, after two years, it will sunset, it's gonna sunset, if it's determined by code enforcement, there's enough, there's satisfactory parking between the two uses.
Yeah, part of the discharge for the city, discharging that easement requirement.
Yeah.
So, Steve, Mr. Witham, that acceptable with you guys?
Yes. Sounds good.
Okay.
Now you want a motion, huh?
Yes.
Oh wait, no, but, yes, there's a public hearing, too.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
How about a public hearing?
I got you.
Anybody on, on Zoom, probably not.
Uh, no, it's just the engineers.
Close the public hearing, now you can make your motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the first part of this, then turn it over to you, and you're gonna say that again?
Yeah.
And then we're gonna be done, right? So, motion to approve the final plan submission, submission for a major use site development home two suites for applicant Witham family in limited partnership with a parking deferment. Actually, stop there and-
Well, yeah, I, so, keep reading that, with a parking deferment per chapter fifty-six, article eleven, section eleven oh five point four, allowing the developer to decrease the number of parking spaces from the required one hundred spaces to the proposed eighty-six spaces, this deferment is granted given the following conditions, the applicant shall submit an easement agreement between the Hampton Inn and the applicant, showing that for two years after the granting of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall have use of fourteen spaces on the Hampton Inn's property, if necessary, after the two-year period, as determined by the code enforcement office, the Hampton Inn shall construct fourteen new spaces, if it is determined there is inadequate parking for both uses on this property.
That's it?
All right, there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? They're approved?
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your help with this.
So, when's it gonna be open? When's it gonna be open?
Uh, twenty twenty-six.
Hopefully break around in April, that's the goal.
Cool.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
If you can read my hand scratch.
People on Zoom, you are free to enjoy the rest of your night.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, we give all this?
Thank you.
We give all this back to you?
Yeah, you're pointing it like that.
You wouldn't mind?
Yeah.
You're gonna have some weight to carry upstairs, I guess, yeah.
Wow.
Item number four, potential action to vote to recommend comprehensive plan adoption to the city council.
Yeah, so, this is the end of the line for the comp plan, hopefully, or nearing it, so, I'm gonna be presenting, I'll get up there to the podium with my laptop in a second, just kind of a review of the final plan, I believe you've all had it for about a month now, as well as the checklist for state compliance with the comprehensive plan, how, what we need to do to get acceptance from the state, once, you know, if it goes to council and gets adopted, then it'll go to the state, and there's a checklist of all the requirements that specifically need to be in the plan, and so I'll review those a little bit as well, and then, yeah, you'll have a public hearing, you're allowed to discuss it, ask any questions of me, about the process and state compliance, they're gonna get questions about specific items, or how we got to certain conclusions in the plan, if you saw something that you thought was a little out of whack or weird, you can ask me how it ended up in the plan, my answer will probably be public engagement, generated that suggestion, like, if we heard from a lot of people, that something should be included, we included it, for the most part, and then, yeah, so it'll be an open discussion after that, a public hearing, I see you do have the chair and vice chair of the steering committee here tonight.
They might as well come down.
They can come on if you'd like.
Yeah. Need to get you in front of a mic.
And they can, you know, provide input as well on the process, you know, all the hours they volunteered, I mean, John and Rick, you're also part of the steering committee, so thank you for your extra hours volunteered to the city. But, yeah, so, we have four of the steering committee members here tonight, too, to discuss anything they'd like about the process and kind of what went into the plan, so, I'll get up there now. I really could just turn off the camera, so you're not, or, now, share my screen, you don't have to stare at me. So, this is actually the presentation that go to council, but it's also for the, so first, I'll probably go over a little bit of the project overview, I mean, you all have a little bit more experience with the comp plan, I believe the council does, so I might keep that a little brief, and then go into really how the plan is structured, when you're reading it, and why it was structured that way, and then kind of go through all the portions of the plan, the introduction, community vision, the guiding principles, the future land use, the planning for growth, the implementation plan, and some of the appendices, and open it up for questions and comments from the steering committee members here as well. So, here's the project overview, the project started April twenty twenty-three, roughly a year and eight months ago now, we worked through the inventory and analysis, which was looking at the existing conditions within the city, you know, where do things stand in terms of infrastructure that we have, in terms of social activity going on in the city, what projects people are working on, and, or have recently completed and so forth. Then phase two, which began in spring of twenty, or, it started in spring of twenty twenty-three, because we did public engagement pretty early on, but lasted until January of twenty twenty-four, so that was a pretty long process, and that was more looking towards what does the city want to see, what do the citizens, what, like, what's the vision the citizens have for the city moving forward over the next ten years, and then, we moved into policy and strategy, strategy recommendations based off of that visioning, what people wanted to see, communications with staff, on where their departments are at and where their needs might be in the future, and then we moved into phase four, which is the implementation plan of how, here are all the recommendations and strategies, but then how would you get there, what actions could the city take or the community take to achieve those goals, and then phase five is the final plan and the production of the document that you all have been reading. So, the plan is structured, if you go to the city website, there's a very easy PDF to navigate of the plan, which I just want to plug, because our IT department and our communications director made it, which was very helpful, there's actually bookmarks, so if you want to go to a specific part of the plan, you don't have to scroll, you can just click and navigate it that way, but, so, there's a table of contents, again, if you see something you like, you just click and it'll go there, which makes it a lot easier to find. So, the introduction of the plan covers an overview of the document, summary of past plans that have happened over the past, well, since really the last comprehensive plan, which was completed in two thousand and four, past planning efforts that have occurred since then, current challenges in the city, a little brief summary of the community feedback that was collected, it also answers questions for the public who may not be super familiar with planning processes, what is a comprehensive plan, why did the city engage in the planning effort, who is this document for, and who was involved in creating the plan, and then the process, like, I've just covered of how the plan was developed, and then there's the community vision and guiding principles, which establishes the foundation for the direction of the plan, based on, you know, themes, and then, really ideals that the communities expressed they would like to see the city achieve or strive for, and then there's the future land use section, which connects the community values and priorities into how that affects the built environment, and so there's the future land use map, or the potential future land use map, which suggests new potential zoning changes or use changes in different areas of the city, based on how the city's growing and effects, really, that we've seen based off of the current land use map, and how different parts of the, so, different zones interact with each other, in sometimes good ways and sometimes not particularly convenient ways. And then planning for growth kind of addresses guidance on how to use the implementation plan, and the physical capacity and regional coordination that goes into that over a long period of time, and then there's the implementation plan itself, which gives the action items that can be achieved and prioritize lists based on comments from the steering committee as they evaluate the plan, and then the appendices are just supporting documents that people can read in more detail of how the plan was made, which includes the inventory and analysis. So, for engaging the community, there was a lot of targeted outreach early on, you know, aside from the steering committee, we also held multiple focus group meetings with different stakeholders throughout the city, in different specialty areas, we held multiple focus groups with city staff, department heads, we also went to community events that we knew were gonna be popular gathering spots for citizens, and the tabling and educational pieces for the comp plan, the next section is looking back, which goes through the city's history, the patterns of development over time, and then recent planning efforts that have identified current challenges and priorities, and there's also looking forward, which ties into the visioning of what the community would like to see moving forward in the plan, and then broad ideas of, you know, economic growth, sustainable built environment, and how to connect the community through transportation more effectively. So, this is the vision statement that the steering committee helped draft, based off of the feedback we got from the community, Ellsworth is a city rooted in tradition that recognizes and honors the people and places of its past, while also supporting future growth and innovation for livable community for all, Ellsworth flourishes by finding balance between urban and rural, preservation and growth, and a year-round economy and seasonal tourism, similarly, the city balances meeting the needs of community members to enhance availability with fiscal responsibility for long-term success. And so, there were nine, guiding principles developed by the steering committee, that would kind of lay out the framework for the rest of the plan, nine are cultivating a rich community, a community rich in the arts and promote the cultural history of down east Maine, protect and preserve the natural environment and rural lifestyle, and encourage sustainable, resilient growth, prioritize affordable and attainable housing to meet the needs of a diverse population, support a vibrant and safe downtown that renews the connection to the waterfront and enhances the city as a regional destination, address infrastructure and facility needs by proactively developing safe, reliable, and sustainable solutions, support educational assets and increase access to learning opportunities for community members at all stages of life, support health and wellness and foster community connections through all phases of life, create and maintain a balance between a resilient year-round economy and robust tourism economy, and expand active and vehicular transportation options and develop local traffic management solutions. So, again, these are just more aspirational ideas that kind of guide the structure and format of the plan moving forward, but it just speaks to a lot of the themes that the steering committee heard from the public during public engagement throughout the process. So, you all did read the plan, so I'm not gonna go through each principle one at a time, again, you have had a little bit more to work with than the council has, and I have a workshop tomorrow night where I'll go through all these in detail with them, if you have questions about a particular principle, I'm happy to come back and address it then, but this just repeats essentially all the principles with the priority action items that were most highest ranked by the steering committee for each one, and then just kind of a summary, I guess, of what the, what the principle actually means in reality, like, what action items could be taken associated with that. So, I'll kind of just scroll through those for each one, give you a second to refresh if, you know, a while since you've read them. But ultimately, again, there was a lot of focus on the need to connect with the historical character of the city, while also promoting new developments such as housing, you know, again, to particular preservation of the downtown and maintaining that as a focal point of culture in the city, connecting to the Union River more directly, for, again, cultural reasons, but also economic reasons, and then updating old infrastructure throughout the city, and then also trying to find a balance of providing adequate services for the aging population that we have, as well as, you know, encouraging new families to move to the city and be able to raise children here, so providing services for both the oldest and the youngest people within the city. And then, well, traffic was also a pretty big discussion point, but, all right, and so, I don't know how you'd be, oh, that's not too bad, to see this is, this is the future land use map, you can kind of see, I don't know if that, okay, that annoying thing is coming up, here, the darker bright, or darker black outline is the growth area as determined by the city, we have not changed the growth area size from the last comprehensive plan, so it's the same as in the last plan, but some changes have been made that suggest new zoning or potential zoning within the growth area and surrounding it, you'll see these light blue zones here, here, and here, that's to focus more on a transitional zone, where you have neighborhood zones established next to high-impact urban zones or the downtown zone, and that sometimes creates conflict where houses are near more industrial or commercial uses that are loud or create exhaust or other nuisances potentially, and so this zone bounces residential with lighter impact commercial or retail uses, so that kind of creates space between the pure neighborhood zone and the high-impact urban zone. And another change will be these kind of grayish-green areas over here, which hasn't really changed, so this exists as the drinking water zone currently, but the feedback we've received from citizens is that they would like to see the similar, the same restrictions or regulations around our other major lakes, and so, that is reflected as a potential option for zoning around Graham and Green Lake as well, to preserve water quality at all the major lakes within the city, this is, should also be that color, but this is also just conserve land in that area to emphasize that, to protect the land around Branch Lake. And then, this tiny green zone here, and there's one up here as well, is called the rural village theme, which is to allow a little bit more expansive commercial and retail use and housing use in small pockets, further down some of our major arteries. use and housing use in small pockets, further down some of our major arteries, to allow for traffic mitigation in a lot of ways. So right now, you have to come downtown for all your services, even if you live in Dedham or North Ellsworth or down the Bucksport Road. But if you allow a small pocket of, you know, like a convenience store, grocery store, or mixed-use housing, people would not be driving all the way through downtown and hopefully reducing traffic trips to this area of town, which is already overburdened with vehicular miles traveled. And so you're creating shorter trips for portions of the population to, like, many service centers almost, so that the whole Ellsworth as a service center isn't just all packed into one space. All right? So Planning for Growth, that really looked at the fiscal capacity of the city and where we're at financially and moving forward. So right now, the city is working on finalizing a capital investment plan. We do have a five-year plan that is technically up to this year, so we're creating a new plan for that internally as well. Just looking at where the city stands with finances and how to fund some of the action items that came out of the implementation plan. And then regional coordination, this is all state requirement, but it's also just smart to have. You know, a lot of these problems are bigger than just Ellsworth, so it takes a regional, larger scope look at some of these issues and how we can work with surrounding municipalities or other groups to prepare and solve some of these problems. And so this is just a sample of the implementation plan itself. It's displayed in a matrix, and I'll go through which each column is. So the first column is just a identifier for each policy and then the action items associated with it. Then there's the policy itself, which is, oh, it's much easier to see here on the computer screen. It's slightly bluish color. It's the policy, and the action recommendations are in a gray underneath of it. And then there's the key principles that ties back to the overarching ideals that are associated with each action. This shows that, like, these actions do align with what the community's vision was. And there's different types of actions related to either partnership or coordination or fulfilling another plan or actual construction project. And then there's a responsible agency or collaborator associated with each action item, and it's not in this presentation, but in the plan itself, there is a list of acronyms explaining what each of these mean at the beginning so that people have a reference sheet to go to. There's also a cost associated with each action, and then the ease of implementation and the timeline of how long it would actually take once the project is started or the action is started to kind of help future councils weigh, you know, what's achievable in a given timeframe and balance doing larger-scale projects with smaller-scale projects, more expensive projects with cheaper projects. And then there are existing plans that kind of relate to each of these items as well, potentially, so that's listed here. And then there are links that link out to funding, potential funding sources for that action item, and then best practices or samples of other communities that have fulfilled a similar-type project. So again, future staff have a reference point to start from to look at how to achieve a project. The appendices are, the appendices, there's a glossary of terms, so if there's terms of art or if a word is more plain language but is used in a very specific way in this plan, there's a glossary explaining that use. There are references to plans and studies that were used to inform the overall comprehensive plan, a more detailed summary of all the community engagement that occurred during the planning process, and then the inventory and analysis, which is, goes into all of the state-required topics and where the city currently is at with each, in regards to each of those topics as well. So I'll open it up to you all for any questions, or we can go to comments from the steering committee first.
I saved up my questions from the first part for now.
Oh, perfect.
I just have, I have a question and a request, I guess. First of all, it's a question for you and for you guys, too. How would you characterize the plan? Is it like a big, huge change of direction and pace and so forth, or is it more modest or what?
Compared to like the existing?
Or life, as we're, as we're, well, you know, the thing is, are we saying, wow, we really need to change direction here from where we are now? Or are we saying, oh, we need to do more tinkering at the margin and kind of more modest things? I mean, what, what does this plan propose along those lines?
If I can interject right there, because I'm in agreement with Rick, it's like, are we saying this is where we're going? Are there teeth, so to speak, associated with this plan and its implementation? Or is it just a nice-to-have? We think we should go that way.
All you know, but that's just me.
Yeah, I'll start with Rick's direct question and then go to Vince's direct question, and then you guys can chime in, too, if you have thoughts. I would say it's a balance of both ambition and trying to organize and get a foundation built to be ambitious. You know, there's a lot of things the city's doing well. Staff works pretty hard to provide high-quality services to the city, but we are a local government, so not everything's perfect. It's difficult to find funding, some things fall through the cracks. And so the plan looks at some of those existing issues where maybe it's deferred maintenance on a lot of things that probably should have been done but wasn't. And so the city's kind of instructs staff to fix those things while in the meantime, balancing that with some newer, more innovative ideas and how to kind of give Ellsworth a identity that the citizenry can kind of get behind. And looking to the future, again, balancing providing services for existing citizens but also future citizens, like kids who are going to school here, how do we get people, young people, to stay in this area? How do we attract people who are from away who have, like, specialties in certain areas or more professional level to come live here, pay taxes, you know, buy things, they have disposable income? And then again, like, go back to attracting families who will put kids in our schools, who will go out and eat at our restaurants. So trying to balance being ambitious to make Ellsworth a very desirable place to come and live, more so than it already is, and then also fixing some of the existing issues that the city has just from deferred maintenance or normal, you know, wear and tear that the city experiences with public infrastructure. To your point of if there's teeth to this, so the idea is that the steering committee will actually exist beyond the plan's completion, may change its name to an implementation committee, but that would be a committee that meets semi-regularly. There should be counselors that are part of that committee, but just kind of go through a checklist and be like, are we actually, you know, meeting any of the goals or action items established by the plan? The kind of review with the city manager, like, what the council's priorities are and, like, what the city manager's plan for those, that plan is, and then, like, you know, things pop up that might not be in the plan, but at least that there is some truth to what's in this document, is what the community spoke to wanting, and that some of those priorities are being addressed every year and looked at in the budget cycle. Kind of Brian or Jenny, do you think that's the?
Thank you. I'm Brian Langley, fifth, I don't know, I live on South Street, Chair of the, of the committee. I see this as a call to action for, for those who are sort of duly elected representative of the community that they serve. It's the kind of information that you, you want to get from your community. So as you, as you kind of, both the planning board and the council, you know, I was looking for, you know, what does our community want? I see this as, as Matt said, a balanced approach. It's not an omnibus kind of bill or, not bill, but a plan that is so far out of reach that you can't attain it. I think the elements that are in it were spoken to by the community, here's what we'd like to see in the community that we live in. I find it very, very balanced and very doable. And, you know, the, the community kind of spoke sort of loudly when you asked them what could be better. There isn't a single person here that would say traffic is not an issue, housing's not an issue. There'll be things when you read through there that you might rank higher, one above the other, depending on, on how you look at it. We all went through that process, but it's a nice guide and a roadmap to sit and use and say, you know, what should we do next? Where should we go? There's, it's a, it's a good plan to have. And then, you know, to be able to check off those things that you are doing and kind of celebrate the wins. Here's what our community asked for, here's what we've done, and to be able to report back pretty regularly, we've, we've, we've done these things that the community asked for. So I would see that as a kind of a welcome opportunity to respond to the community.
Yeah. My name is Jen. I'm the vice chair of the steering committee. I also live right downtown in Ellsworth. And I guess with a lot of these items, the thing that's really nice is that some of these things are things that are already underway. Some of them, we could already tick off of the boxes, being done just since we finished the project. There are some things that people are considering working on, they already know that they need to be done, and they're fairly easy to attain. And then there are other things, like, there's a really wide spectrum of, like, what's purely aspirational, once we get some other priorities done, what are we going to be able to do? If we end up very fortunate and we get a million dollars in funding, are we going to be able to do a lot of smaller things? Or do we want to push it on this one bigger thing that's really expensive but also going to be more impactful for the community? So there's a lot of opportunity there for us to accomplish a lot and also reach higher, too, in the future, since it is a ten-year plan. We never know in eight years if those needs are going to change or whatever, and we try to account for that, too, in the process.
I think these were all really good answers, personally. I think you should lead with that when you talk to council.
Oh, yeah.
And I think, I think this really, the kind of stuff you've just said now really sets a context for all that detailed stuff that you had up there. So that would be just the suggestion. Yeah, and, and this is my request then. That wasn't a request. Oh, just, okay. Anyway, the request is that I really, I really like the idea that, you know, the implementation and the fact that the steering committee or vestiges of it or whatever go forward with this. And I, and I think it's a really good idea to, to kind of assess how far we've gotten and so forth. But I would also really, and I would hope that would be included in the final document, actually, that we should also be tracking what hasn't worked. And, you know, what have we done that hasn't worked? We tried this, it was an abject failure or whatever, and here's why, okay? And one of the reasons is it's just useful to do that, okay, in general. But the other thing is that, you know, in my major few years on the board here and so whatever, I mean, everybody in this room just about is new. Okay, I mean, they've been around, okay? I mean, John's been around forever, okay? But, but, you know, everyone, the point is that the council has changed, the staff has changed. We're on our eighty-third planner, I think, right?
Eighty-fifth.
Something, something like that. And so the thing is that really keeping track of what goes wrong and so forth provides context for new people and the new councils and new staff that come in and so forth, so that they say, oh, well, let's try it this way. Well, we already did that, and it didn't work or whatever. So I would just, you know, make a point in here of, we're also, that committee is also going to be tracking what has gone wrong and so forth, and how could, and how whatever we've done could be improved if we wanted to do something again.
I do like that suggestion. Well, I have requests, sorry, that was a request.
That was a, that was a request, yeah.
Yes, a lot. I probably won't go into this document, but I could bring it up when talking about the implementation committee and how that is a responsibility that they would have to, to work with staff.
I know you don't want to change the document.
Well, we could, but.
Anyway, but, point made, right?
Yeah. Now, I'll just add, Vince, to your question a little bit extra, is that not all implementation plans have the funding sources and the sample, like, projects to look at. So at least this, in this way, it kind of encourages staffing, you know, if a different municipality's done something well, I already reach out to other municipality's staff to find out what they do and what works, what doesn't. But this gives a place for them to start and kind of reach out and be like, all right, well, this city already did this. I know it comes in the plan. I don't have to Google search and spend, like, at least an hour or so researching who else I can reach out to to get advice on something, so.
If I may have, this is a question of curiosity rather than anything else.
Yeah.
But a lot of this is about business development and building community out from the financial side of things. Were we, was the committee able to look at places, businesses, and other concerns that might be attracted to Ellsworth but aren't here yet? In other words, X, Y, Z business over there someplace in Vermont or whatever, how might we make Ellsworth more attractive to that business?
So the comp plan did not specifically look at that, but the comp plan was informed by a recently completed business attraction plan that the Economic Development Office completed. And so there's, these penalties kind of go together in some ways, but the more specific information on something like that was within the business attraction plan.
Okay.
I think I can add to what your question is. But Brian, I like your statement, a call, this is a call to action. I think that needs to be emphasized to the council that this is a call to action. And I think your principle number five, I think, is what it was.
Go to that slide for you. Did I go by it? I went by it.
You please buy it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Address infrastructure. In order for businesses to feel comfortable here and to be able to be successful here, the infrastructure has to be improved. Water lines have to be improved, the roads have to be improved. Instead of the city council or whatever, you can't tell them what to do, but instead of the city council cutting the road budget so much that they can't improve the roads, they need to understand that if we're going to have businesses here, I mean, you're going to increase truck traffic, you're going to increase, you know, people coming to town, wanting to come to town. But right now, you think about High Street, it's very difficult. And then, heaven forbid, but we got people crossing one side of High Street to the other to get the business without crosswalks and walking right in the middle of traffic.
Playing Frogger.
Yeah. I mean, you know, so something has to be done to the infrastructure before businesses are going to come to this town.
And one hand washes the other. Once you attract those businesses, you add revenue, you build a bigger community, you build a stronger community, and you, the ball gets rolling where now you are able to afford things.
And hopefully, and hopefully that revenue comes in to increase or improve the infrastructure. You know, there are areas, underground, underground infrastructure that needs to be improved, not just above ground. And, you know, just to address it, I can understand addressing it, but it needs to be repaired or improved, you know, for something to be successful.
I will say, my intent was that the word address would be include repair and improve.
I understand. I was going to ask you what the intent of that really was, but I figured you, so, I think you addressed it later on in the, in your narrative.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are definitely specific action items that call out larger infrastructure pieces to be impaired and approved. I mean, one that's just currently ongoing and funding for has been sought after and acquired is the water treatment plant. That'll be upgraded, and a new one will be with the city within the next couple of years. You know, we're going through the thriving communities, planning process for High Street, look at things like crosswalks, where to add, or change lights potentially, but also just beautification and how to make it more attractive to businesses. So there are luckily some things that are ongoing already that are multi-year processes that go into the ten-year span of this plan, so they're included in this as well.
I'm not sure how it's done at, like, a city level, but I know, like, in my tenure in the legislature, added to a motion to approve or accept maybe at the city council level would be a yearly report back, a formal yearly report back to the council on progress so that it doesn't get shelved and forgotten about. And that gets written into the minutes and it becomes part of the statute or whatever. And, and so I don't, I mean, that's kind of a recommendation I would make. It's, you know, every January fifteenth or something like that, and so that, there's a presentation on where we stand with, you know, the comprehensive plan till the next one's done.
Yep.
A master copy.
And so that, you know, it's, here's what we've done, and it resurfaces again at least, you know, once a year, somebody goes, oh, yeah.
And that's really what's in the implementation plan in the, in the document here, that sort of thing.
But, you know, prior to this starting, I don't know, I, I don't say, I don't know if I could say I follow every single council meeting, but I couldn't tell you when the last time it was talked about.
It would be a recall to action.
Yeah.
Recall. I like that one.
Another thing we should mention, I mean, I mean Barry Dunn, who was the consultant and put this all together, and, I mean, I thought they did an admirable job. I kind of wish, going back a year and a half, two years, when we were reviewing other comprehensive plans that they had done and the other company had done, and kind of compare those to what we have now. Because I don't recall those, I mean, this document is, what, almost two hundred, two hundred eighty pages, almost three hundred pages?
Around that.
I don't- I don't recall, maybe you guys have better memories, but the ones that we looked at, kind of compare them, were that thorough or is it a case? I don't want to change anything, but too much information.
Well, John, I will say, when we looked at those plans, so the, so there's sections of the plan that make it the three hundred pages. So like, when we reviewed the consultants' applications with their sample work, we weren't looking at their inventories and analysis. We weren't looking at a lot of the appendices documents. I don't even think they had the implementation plans necessarily, it was just really the written narrative plans, which is still chunky, but not quite three hundred pages.
Yeah, we were about twenty, twenty-five pages, some of those other ones we read.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which, I think about what you would have, I think, if you were just to get the gist of it, you know, sort of the executive level.
Yeah.
I thought Barry Dunn did a very nice job with it, too. They listened intently. They took the suggestions back, rephrased things at least three or four times.
And there were definitely times over the past year and a half where the planning office was not able to really engage with the plan the way I would have liked, so they just kind of took the plan and ran with it, which was very helpful.
Any other questions or comments?
I also want to mention where we do have other nonprofits that are involved in, well, we hope that they would help us with things. This entire plan isn't a burden taken on by the city, so it's not like every single minutia thing that you see in here is going to be done by the city, by the volunteers or staff. There, it's something that's going to happen throughout the community from different nonprofits, from different, like, the schools, of course, are going to be doing some of that work.
Yeah, arts community.
Yeah, the arts community.
Historical society.
Yeah, historical society, yeah. Already sent it to the grant writers and was like, here, use this. So, yeah, so it's something that's really, in some way, is actually going to, like, build stronger relationships between the nonprofits, help to foster that relationship with the city and these other nonprofits, and is not intended to be just, like, a lot of extra work for city staff or city volunteers to not be able to do their other work.
And that's a very good note to bring up, because I almost forgot, that the list of the nonprofits that are listed in the plan as potential partners is not, you know, limiting who could help on certain projects.
That, too, yeah.
Organizations have already expressed interest in a certain goal or are already working on a certain goal, but it does not prohibit other nonprofit organizations from coming. We just couldn't list every single group in the city within the plan. Now, well, I guess I'll just plug the housing study, too, because I was also going to the council in December. We have our first final draft of that completed. It went out to the Housing Task Force today for review. I'll probably actually have Brittany send it to you all tomorrow, too, just to review. But that was done concurrently with the comp plan, using data and public engagement from the comp plan. Well, we combined both systems, so things that we might not have done with the comp plan. Normally, we added to help fund or field the housing study. But essentially, over the past two years, there have been three studies done, the business attraction plan, the comprehensive plan, and the housing study, all kind of done in an efficient manner to get a bulk of planning done that has kind of been set aside for quite a while within the city, done in a two-year period.
Can I ask for comments a few moments ago? My comment would be that I really am happy with the fact that this has been such a process that's been very inclusive, members of the community, members of government. And I think you've got a really, really good look at what is, I'll say, needed in this community. And I feel like if we can, I'll go back to a word I used, expression I used a while ago, if we can get some teeth in this, we will be, in ten years, a much healthier community than we are now.
Any other comments? Because I know I've got to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, that's all I've got, so. That's all I've got.
Okay. A little bit of the public hearing. Charlie, you got any questions, comments? Put you on the spot.
You remember the public.
Go for it. Go for it, the next cue.
Ellsworth American?
No.
No? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. You want to make the motion?
Uh, is it, sure, but a couple of questions first, though. Is it a, is it adoption, per se, or is it acceptance? I mean, those words mean different things, right?
Uh, I don't remember what I put in the.
Whatever you want.
Recommendation?
Yeah, you are a recommendation to the council to adopt.
Right, but it's to adopt, not just to accept?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So I would make a motion to, let's see, recommend adoption to, of the comprehensive, Ellsworth 2035 comprehensive plan to the city council for its adoption.
Second? All of you?
Thank you all.
Nick? Thank you, Brian and Jen.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for doing it.
Okay.
Any comments?
No, I touched on the housing study, so I think that first draft of the final document is done. Just while we're on the topic of the comp plan, just been thanking all the volunteers that participated. I mean, the, I was going through for a council memo of the public engagement that was done, and just with the steering committee meetings alone, the ten, well, twelve total volunteers, but ten really active throughout the whole process. There were twenty-three meetings, which some were called short notice, others were regularly scheduled, monthly meetings, but they're two hours each, so that's a pretty much a whole work week for volunteers to come in and talk about the comprehensive plan. So, and then, again, the people who are doubling up, the city councilors who are involved, planning board members, it's a lot of your time, so I appreciate all the work you guys put into it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That's it for now. I mean, I'll probably give an update on some of the transportation stuff next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have a consultant for the, for the village partnership initiative, look at downtown by next meeting, and then Thriving Communities, I'll have a finalized work plan, which I'll also share with the planning board prior to the next meeting, so.
That's, that's in, in January?
Yes. Well, presumably, if we have projects or if we need to meet, we could put it off till February, depending on what happens. Because it's the day after New Year, so you might not want to meet them.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
There we go, done.
We're done?